Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 17, 2021 regular school committee meeting at 5:30 p.m. At this time, I entertain a motion for the purpose of entering an executive session to review and approve executive meeting minutes, and also to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining with employee groups and/or personnel matters. The school committee will reconvene the regular open meeting at 6:30 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second half motion.
I have a motion and a second to enter to executive session. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene our regularly scheduled school committee meeting at 6:36 PM. The November 17th, 2021 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded, and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34 or at youtube/tuksburytv.com. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording at an open session of a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting, if they could please identify himself or herself. Thank you. Seeing none, I would like to ask one of the heroes of last night's Megan McCarthy fashion show, if you wouldn't mind having us all please rise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We declare the oath of which stands One Nation, Hallelujah, indivisible, liberate, justice, and truth.
Thank you, Jack. And you have the floor, Mr. Stadman.
All right. As always, thanks for having me back. The Team HS Drama Club hosted multiple showings of their recent production Clue, all of which were very successful. They are now excited to start on their next production of Forbidden Broadway. The student council is holding their weekly meetings on Thursday mornings. The Spirit Day Dip and Dots Award has been postponed due to a dry ice shortage. The morning update is still broadcasting live every morning. You can tune in on YouTube to catch the latest in-school updates. And the class of 2022, with the help from all other class councils, held a homecoming to remember last week. A big thank you to all the teachers that helped out and the students that attended. And in late October, the high school held their annual Apple Fest once again. This gave clubs a chance to fundraise around the school and to advertise. Every club raised a successful amount of money. The class of 2022 in particular sold out of all their hats, all 54. And last but certainly not least, the high school DECA team hosted their annual Megan McCarthy fashion show. Out of the 71 active DECA members this year, 64 total members participated either in the show or volunteered, which, if you've got your calculators out, is just about 90% of the members, which is a tremendous participation. They would like to thank the Team HS Theatre Company for their help and support on the production, as well as the continuous support from Mr. Bernard and everyone else who helped out. A big shout out to this year's co-directors of the fashion show, Eva Gilligan, Mia Gekleon, and Jack Stadman. They all did a wonderful job. Currently, they have collected over $17,000 on behalf of the Megan McCarthy Cancer Research Fund, which is phenomenal. And every member had a great time, and the show was taped and will be broadcasted on local channels soon. That is it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. And once again, thank you and thank everyone that participated. That's a wonderful event every year. It certainly is very heartwarming, so it's wonderful to see. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our athletic director. We have two very special high school coaches that are ending their careers with us this year. Full disclosure, I've known both these guys, especially Tommy almost my whole life, and his brother Mark and his family. Wonderful Tuxbury people. It's never about money with these guys. It's always about kids. We're really grateful to have you guys in here, be able to acknowledge your accomplishment over the years. So, thank you.
Mark, come on up and join me, please. So we're here this evening to honor a couple individuals that are just up in attack for this here in Tuxbury. Significantly impacted the community and significantly impacted on our students in the school district. the school district, their long-term coaching and other pieces. Mr. Drew, let's talk a little bit about lineage of them, not only as coaches, but when they were players and so forth, but I will tell you from my point of view, have witnessed many times football practices in the dark, basketball practices later than they should be, you know, working with kids who are drained a full day of school and trying to keep them motivated. Although professionally, they work for the school district as coaches, I think, of our fighting teachers. They just do a great job with our kids. They build strong relationships. They've allowed our coaches to continually get better, and they've improved our district and improved our kids' education. With that, I give up.
Yeah, no, I second everything Mr. Malone said. Tommy and Mark Bradley are friends. They're great coaches. They're great leaders of our, both boys and girls, athletes at the high school. I'll start with Tommy. Tommy's been a longtime football assistant here, been a longtime basketball assistant, and, you know, our basketball program five years ago was in a little bit of transition. Our head coach left and went to a different community, and we needed a head basketball coach, and immediately went to Tommy, knowing the way that he connects with kids and gets the most out of kids and builds relationship with kids. We were in a tough position at that point, and Tommy came in and did a good job, and, you know, we qualified for the tournament, and I'm proud of the fact that, you know, with Tommy, we started the Tony Romano Christmas Tournament. Tony Romano was a longtime educator here and coach here, and Tommy was intricate in getting that started. We actually won the first Romano Christmas Tournament, Tuxbury High did. Tommy's done great things with the boys program. The booster group grew. He did a lot of good things. He's a Hall of Fame athlete here at the high school, Hall of Fame athlete at UMass Lowell, longtime assistant, and solid people and solid coaches like Tommy Bradley don't grow on trees, you know? And the time that he gives to kids in this community, and it isn't just on the field, it's off the field with, you know, whether they need a job, or they need advice, or they need whatever it is, Tommy is there all the time, and he's a great friend, and I know with his younger, you know, son, Timmy, still at the high school, he'll be around the basketball games and around the court, and I can't say thank you enough. He was put into a tough position and did a great job with it. Mark, you know, I've known since he was a freshman in high school, played baseball for me at the high school, was a very good infielder. You know, he's a football assistant, does a tremendous job with our secondary and the football, you know, football team, and he's been our girls' basketball coach for 14 years. He's got over 150 wins. He's got six league championships. He took the girls' basketball team to the North final at the Songas Center, the furthest any of our girls' basketball teams has gone under Mark's leadership. He started a summer camp that has fueled our girls' basketball program, both with players and built our booster group. Their booster group is monstrous. Mark was very instrumental in getting that going. He has a wonderful way with the girls. His mannerisms and his body language were always positive and never threatening, intimidating, any of those things towards girls. He just carried himself like a professional all the time, and Mark and Tommy are two of the finest guys I know, finest people I know, and both of those coaches stepping in for these guys have big shoes to fill, and I'm appreciative. You know, it's always tough when you're in transition with coaches, and I'm appreciative of everything they've done, and I know, based on the kind of people that they are, that anytime, whether it's me or the new head coaches, need any kind of assistance, guidance, help, references to different coaches to set up games, scrimmages, whatever, I know they'll always be there for them. So thank you, guys, for everything you guys have done for those programs and I continue to do for our kids at the high school. I'm very appreciative. Thank you so much.
So it's tough to follow Mr. Drew's words, but I do have a resolution. I have Tommy's. So I'd like it to, resolution of recognition, whereas Tom Bradley served Tuxbury Memorial High School as multiple sport coach, and whereas Coach Tommy Bradley has been with the Tuxbury Redmen Boys Varsity Basketball Head Coach for the past five years, and whereas under the direction of Coach Bradley, the boys varsity basketball team qualified for a state tournament bid and were the champions of the Tony Romano Christmas Turney, and whereas Coach Tommy Bradley was inducted into both the TMHS Athletic Hall of Fame and the UMass Lowell Athletic Hall of Fame, and whereas Tommy Bradley has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to himself, to the Tuxbury Public Schools, and to the town of Tuxbury. Therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts of Coach Tommy Bradley. Thank you on behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee.
And I'd like to read a resolution of recognition for Mark Bradley. Whereas Mark Bradley has served the Tuxbury Memorial High School Redmen Girls Varsity Basketball Head Coach for 14 years, and whereas under the direction of Coach Bradley, the girls' varsity basketball team had over 150 wins, qualified for the North sectional final and were the Spartan Classic Champions at the Hamilton Wenham Tournament Champions. Whereas Coach Mark Bradley led the Redmen Girls Basketball Team to six MVC Championships, and whereas Mark Bradley has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to himself, to the Tuxbury Public Schools, and to the town of Tuxbury. Therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the many efforts of Coach Mark Bradley. On behalf of the Tuxbury School Committee, we recognize you today.
Mark, y'all, get over there, for God's sakes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before I run. Before I run, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the volleyball team. State semifinals with the new state tournament, that is the equivalent of like winning a North sectional final under the way the old tournament would have went, Keith, and I'm asking, requesting if we could bring them in, whether it's December or January, to recognize volleyball team.
Absolutely. Would love to have them in December.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Drew. See you, guys. No presentations tonight. That brings us to Citizens Forum. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to any agenda item? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Deanna Mancini, 15 Kenneth Lane.
Maria Sigg Leoni, 1098 Whipple Road.
Good evening. We are here representing the Tuxbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and we're here tonight to discuss a few important updates and upcoming events. First of all, November has been declared CPAC Awareness Month by Governor Baker. To celebrate, CPACs across Massachusetts will be having a Wear Yellow Day on this Friday, November 19th. We are encouraging Tuxbury students, staff, and families to wear something yellow this Friday to support special education students and their families. On Saturday, November 20th, the Zachem Bridge in Boston will be lit up yellow to support CPAC awareness. Secondly, the CPAC's next business meeting will be tomorrow, November 18th, at 7:00 PM. It will be on Zoom. For information about how to log in, you can email us or go to our Facebook Public Business page, which is CPAC, T-S-E-P-A-C, Tuxbury Special Education PAC. The CPAC this year has three specific goals, and we hope that at the end of this school year, we can present the school committee the progress we've made towards our goals. Our first goal is for community engagement. The CPAC will engage the community by participating in at least 10 community-based events throughout the 2021-2022 school year. Examples of community events include open houses, community fairs, and markets. We've already participated in the library's Community Roundtable and the Tuxbury Safe Halloween, as well as several school-based open houses.
Goal number two, professional and transparent communication. Through open, transparent, and professional communication, the CPAC Facebook Business page will have at least 200 likes by the end of 2021-2022 school year. The CPAC email list will increase by at least 10%. Goal number three, parent support and advocacy. The CPAC will host at least four parent support groups throughout the 2021-2022 school year, and in collaboration with the district, two workshops for parents. We have a basic rights workshop on January 20th and are working with Mr. Pelletier on other workshops. The CPAC is looking forward to another great year of collaboration with other parents, with the administration, and with the teachers in an effort to make a more inclusive environment for all learners. You can reach the CPAC by emailing us at tuxburycpac, that's T-U-C-S-B-E-R-Y, S-E-P-A-C, all one, at gmail dot com. We thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Hello.
Good evening, sir.
Mark Toderisi, Kendall Road. Chairman, my item's not specifically related to an agenda item, but it would fall into the purview of the policy subcommittee. I don't know if you'll indulge me.
Well, you're certainly welcome to make a comment. We encourage people's input, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I also want to thank the rest of the committee members, officer, other town workers for being here tonight, and I know this is not an easy job. Over the last week, I've conversed with Chairman Sullivan. Chairman Sullivan was very responsive and informative in answering my questions. My concern has been the rise of race-based curricula and/or critical race theory, CRT, being taught in public schools. Chairman Sullivan assured me that the Tuxbury Public Schools are not engaged in race-based or CRT training. While I understand that this is the current position and policy of the school board, I suggested that the board take the additional step of passing a resolution affirming opposition to race-based teaching and CRT. Other boards around the country have taken this step to solidify their position on the issue. Chairman Sullivan informed me that because the policy is that race-based teaching and CRT are not part of the curriculum, a resolution was not necessary. However, as with any organization, unless an official stance is stressed enough, employees may not follow, may be following the policy. In a late 2020 article in a Tuxbury Town Crier, a Tuxbury High School English teacher related the following to a reporter, I paraphrase. "The teacher reflected on how the events of 2020 and the Black Lives Matter, BLM movement, changed the way he teaches." Quote, "I always try to include different texts that advocate for diversity. I try to evaluate which authors to use, and the BLM movement has really made me want to do that in full force this year. Another teacher and I want to work on making units primarily based around black voices." End quote. While incorporating some elements of this into the curriculum may be beneficial or even needed, what is to stop a teacher from focusing solely on a single race in their teachings up to and including elements such as CRT? Teachers could definitely introduce CRT through certain inclusion or exclusion of texts and concepts. I believe that a resolution from the board will send a clear message to teachers that all curriculum needs to be specifically aligned with official policies. I urge the board to consider making a resolution that race-based curricula and CRT is not part of the public school, the Tuxbury Public School policies. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your input, sir, and we certainly will make sure that we stay abreast of making sure that we're teaching what we should be teaching. With all due respect, this is not a political board. This is a business board, where we do welcome and appreciate the public to come and witness, for the lack of a better term, our government at work, us included. We're not here for political issues, with all due respect. We're here for the benefit and the advancement of all our children. We're here to set the policy. We're here to negotiate a superintendent. We have very specific guidelines. I certainly respect your position wholeheartedly. I appreciate the way that you presented it to us and to myself, but we're just, we're not in the business of making political resolutions, so. You're welcome.
Name is Robert Hanley, Two Hillcrest Road. Last month's school committee meeting, I made a suggestion to basically canvas or survey the parents in the town of Tuxbury about obvious, you know, elephant in the room kind of policies that we have, regardless of whether or not they can be changed at this level. I feel like it's very important for the committee and the powers that be know that they are in line with the will of the community, and I don't understand how you could know that if you don't ask, in general, parents only. So I'm going to reiterate that I feel that that should be low-hanging fruit, something easy that can be done, that can at least let us understand where the community stands on very important issues affecting our children. So I request that again. Second, I-
Excuse me, Mr. Hanley. I apologize. Can you just refresh me what that was?
So we had one survey related to masks in August, I believe. I don't remember if the results were even published. I know that they were talked about at a school committee meeting, but I would think that with such a divisive issue, we'd want to know how the parents feel about it and then follow up. You know, things change month to month, you know, and then everybody's opinion changes. So I don't see why that can't be done. Simple, one question survey, right? Just parents, no administrators, no, you know, other community members, parents only. So that, that's what I would request. Second, I was curious whether or not there has been discussions or if there is currently discussions on inviting mobile vaccination clinics on school property.
I think Mr. Malone is actually going to speak to that on this update this evening.
Okay. I look forward to hearing about that. And aside from that, I do find it just strange and disheartening that they were- And aside from that, I do find it just strange and disheartening that they were doing the Zoom parent-teacher conferences again. I personally requested an in-person meeting, and I was granted it, and I very much appreciate my son's teacher for doing that and responding quickly, but I feel like that is an unnecessary step. I feel like, you know, with what's going on, I think it's fair to have parents be able to see their child's classroom. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
I'll leave it at that. All right? Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Okay, thank you. With that, I am going to ask our clerk the approval of minutes. If you have a clerical issue there?
So before I make a motion, I just wanted to bring attention to under the moment of silence last month. It reads, "Mr. Sullivan called for a moment of silence in remembrance of Nicholas Romano, a fellow colleague who served on the school committee years ago." That should read, "In remembrance of Nicholas Romano, the father of Ann Romano," who was a former colleague who served on the school committee years ago. So if we could just update that, make that amendment, I would then make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
First check on my colleagues. Is everyone okay with the amendment?
Yes.
Clerk Alara, you okay with that, Mrs. DeMol?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I have a motion. Do I have a second to approve the October 13, 2021 minutes?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the October 13, 2021 minutes. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. And Mrs. Garabedian, for our payroll, please.
Yep. All right. Yep, ma'am. Okay. I move the school department payroll for the period ending 10/14/2021 to be approved and certified, and the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,413,025.66. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending October 4, 2021, in the amount of $1,413,050—I'm sorry, $25.66. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Mrs. Garabedian?
I move the school department payroll for the period ending 10/28/2021 to be approved and certified, and the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,421,048.91. Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending October 28, 2021, in the amount of $1,421,048.91. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. With that, we're going to turn the floor over to our superintendent for his report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a point of information, Mr. Regan will actually be presenting on any vaccination opportunities for community members. Just a reminder that messaged out to parents last week, particularly last week, we had a significant rise in COVID-positive cases. There was a particular increase at the Wynn Middle School. Our current COVID tracker is at 29. Last week, we reached highs of 45. That would probably match our top weekly tracker number in the whole entirety of the pandemic, so something we're just trying to keep an eye on. We did take some proactive moves over at the Wynn Middle School around some additional cleaning, kind of relook at our spacing with students, seeing if we could make some adjustments. So we're hoping that that will have an impact, but certainly we're keeping an eye on those pieces and the impact they may have on an individual school or in the district as a A big thank you to our school nurses who have been working diligently on assisting with pool testing and contact tracing on positive cases. It's a very tenuous task. It's very involved, but it also helps us as a mitigation strategy, so we're certainly appreciative of all their work. They have been working significant hours on the weekends and at nights. Last week, we were able to bring on an additional nurse to work with the district to kind of support them in that work. In addition to that, we've also brought on a person to help in the contact tracing aspect. So we're hoping that that can alleviate some of those significant impacts on our school nurses. As we also messaged out last week, the DESE statewide mask requirement has been extended through January 15, 2022. We will also be working with staff initially to begin to determine vaccination status of staff members in relation to the DESE guidance that pertains to reaching 80% vaccination rate in the school would allow those people vaccinated to remove their mask during the school. I don't think the initial numbers that we're looking at, that we're quite close to that just yet, but we certainly want to find out for sure. There is a requirement of an attestation from the district to the state to verify that piece, if in fact that's the case. So that's something we'll look at going down the road. Last week was National School Psychology Week. Again, our school psychologists, and also what I would group in at this point, is our school adjustment counselors and school social workers, just working with the social, emotional, and clinical needs of our students every day. Certainly, the elements around the pandemic and missing school and going from hybrid back to full return have impacted a lot of our kids, so we appreciate all the work they're doing. And again, people are operating in a work environment, you know, very different from what they're used to, so we appreciate everything that everyone is doing. Some kind of good news, bad news on staffing situations. Bad news, we continue, as we've reported for several months in a row, to struggle to find substitute teachers for our schools. It's just—it's tough right now. We've done some recruiting. We've done some other pieces. We've looked at the pay rate. We've done as many things as we can to try to bring in substitutes, but we're certainly still in need. So if anyone out there in the community is—has someone in the family or someone that is looking for some line of work like this, certainly let them know. And also, we continue to struggle to fulfill both classroom aides and one-to-one aides for our students. We have worked with an agency. We're trying to bring that part in, but again, particularly with the aides, these are our most needy kids, so we want to make sure we're fully staffed in that area, and we're still not there just yet. On the good news side, we've hired two additional occupational therapists within the past week to offset some of the compensatory services that have arisen in that. And we've also brought on board two additional school adjustment counselors just this past week. We've also lost a couple of school psychologists, so we're trying to compensate, trying to do the best we can. We certainly want to meet the needs of our kids socially, emotionally, clinically, so we'll continue to work on those and see where we can continue to bring on these situations, albeit it may be in a temporary situation, at least so that we can meet the needs of our students. Thank you to everyone who participated in the Open Meeting Law Training on October 21st. It was run by Dorothy Presser of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. She's been a great supporter of Tewksbury Public Schools, and we appreciate her taking the time to come in, work with our committee, and also work with our school improvement councils at the building level. A big thank you to Lori Carreri and Carolyn Gagliani for their leadership in ensuring that the Apple Fest event took off in late October. Big undertaking, huge traditional event in town, had been canceled due to COVID last year. You know, we had to make some tweaks and some adjustments, but they just did a great job, soldiered on, and it was a great event. We appreciate all their work, a great fundraiser for high school, you know, seniors' class and all those things, but also a great event for the community, so we're proud that that was successful. Also, specific to Tewksbury Memorial High School, we have very good news from NIASC, who is the association that accredits the high school. We have had our five-year progress report accepted by NIASC, so that's a big benchmark piece in continuing with the accreditation process. So congratulations to them, great work. Also, we will be releasing the 2019-2020 Executive Session Minutes, subject to redaction. We are also currently in that process where the committee has approved a couple of trips, traditional trips this year that we have not been able to do in the past. One is a Costa Rica trip due to go out in April, which was actually a two-year-old because it was postponed because of the pandemic, we kept it online. We had a new trip that was presented by the high school in regards to a Western U.S. National Parks tour to go out in April as well, and we're trying to reconvene the eighth grade Washington, D.C. trip out of the Wynn School. We're trying to fine-tune some of those pieces around travel restrictions to the locations these trips are going, what's the current status of the pandemic in those areas, and what is the insurance impact that comes with the trip as far as if someone contracts COVID or other illness or other element on these trips. So we're trying to fine-tune those pieces. Again, another layer of kind of looking at, trying to get as many of these traditional elements back in view, make them happen, but there are some other complications that we'll obviously have to look at over the next month or so to make sure we're in good standing keeping those trips going forward. The district security team met on October 28. We were able to discuss and review our MOU with the Tewksbury Police Department and our multi-hazard plan, well, with the Tewksbury Fire Department as well. So we continue to look at that work, and we're also really looking at how we can get back to a level of training with Alice and other elements in relation to school safety where we were before the pandemic. We think we're in a good situation to do that. It makes perfect sense to do that. Police—Tewksbury Police, Tewksbury Fire are very much on board, so we hope to be planning some training and some exercises around that, which we were very successful doing leading up to the pandemic, and we certainly want to continue with. With that, I just have one, you know, final statement, and that is just that it's certainly been very proud of a lot of the work that we've all been involved in here in Tewksbury Public Schools. It's certainly been my pleasure to be a part of that. Some of this work is obviously very difficult and very complex. I have been retirement-eligible here for a little while, so it's certainly a piece of which I kind of wrestle with. It's a very joyous situation for me, but it's also work I enjoy doing very much, so it's somewhat of a struggle. But it is a scenario where I have moved forward and put in my retirement paperwork to the state. That is typically a four-month-or-so process. It has not been approved as of yet. If it does become approved, that would likely become effective on February 20. So kind of one of those things I've been thinking about for a while, and we've got a few months to get to that timeframe, but something also, part of me is looking forward to it, but part of me will know I certainly miss the work, but we've got plenty of work to do to get to that point before we get there anyways.
Great, thank you. I'm going to open it up to my colleagues. I'll start with Mr. Bass. Any questions, comments?
Not at this time. Definitely bittersweet, but sorry to lose you, Chris, and, you know, happy you can retire peacefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Garabedian?
Similar. I, you know, I think retirement sounds probably pretty fantastic, you know, 2022. So, you know, I wish you well in these months while you plan for that, and certainly anything we can do on our end, you know, please keep us abreast of that. I just had one question. When we talked—you talked about initial numbers not quite being there yet in terms of meeting the 80% threshold. Is that because we don't have enough people that have put in or have responded?
Great question.
Or is it the numbers are there, but they're not there, you know?
Great question.
The responses are in, but the numbers—
So some of the data we've been going off of is townwide state data, which tells us a age span in the town. Doesn't specifically tell us about any of our schools, but will tell us what the vaccination rate—and usually that's identified, the max number, as at least one shot in the arm. And it divides it up between 12- to 15-year-olds and further divides it up between 16- and 19-year-olds. Right now, 16- to 19-year-olds in the town of Tewksbury, again, that's not specific to Tewksbury Memorial High School, where the town is at about 77%. 12- to 15-year-olds town-wide, that does not specify the Wynn Middle School or Tewksbury Memorial High School, were at 59%. When DESE looks at that calculation to get to the 80%, to determine that those individuals no longer have to wear masks who are vaccinated, it takes into account the staff in the building, the students in the building, everybody in there. So to get to the easy point of view, we have not asked. We have not asked up until this point because the state had not produced a system about which they would verify this. They have now, which is that individuals would either need to show a copy of their vaccination card—I think some places where you get it, CVS, you might have it on a mobile app or something like that—or an attestation sheet that DESE provides, which basically says, "I'm attesting to the fact that I've had that." Further, once we've collected that in and calculated a true percentage at a school, we would—as a district—would have to attest to DESE that, in fact, we've checked that. So I think what we're looking at doing is starting off with staff to see where staff are at, you know, work out any kinks about collecting that data, doing those pieces, where that lives. It can—it is—a lot of places that data can't live. Where it actually lives is—it becomes another question, but there's a lot of places where it can't or it shouldn't, so it should be completely separate on its own, however it is collected. But that would be our intention, to go down that road, see where we're at with staffing, and then make the determination if we're going to ask families where they're at with that process at that time.
Thank you very much.
And Mrs. DeMol, I'm just going to, while we're on the topic, we're going to ask, right? We're not going to compel—
It's an ask.
—our agents or staff or family members who want to be—
There's no—even with staff, there's no—there is a separate law out there that people are looking at that, right now, our understanding does not apply to municipalities and school districts. So at this point, we are asking. And that might be—if people are not going to answer to it, that is an answer. So that, you know, that has to go into that bucket, so. And we know it's a sensitive topic, and we'll tread it away. Most districts around us have already asked the information, particularly of their staff. We have not because we wanted to make sure we knew what the process was that DESE was going to use to determine or verify that you hit the 80%, which was not identified until— until last month.
Okay, great.
And Mrs. Demos?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Malone, you spoke of the two new occupational therapists that were hired for compensatory services. Are they hired at a one-year contract or just for the compensatory services, or are they on board with us?
Every position that I described in this are all on one-year contracts.
It is one-year contract?
Yes.
I hadn't seen that one come through. So I knew the adjustment councils were one-year, but I hadn't seen the OT come through. Okay. And then can we maybe think about having an update brought to school committee with the trips that we discussed and we had approved, you know, come, say, January? I mean, it doesn't need to be next month, but like, as we get more information and you're delving into it, I'd like to revisit that. Not that they need to have any, you know, final answers just yet, but especially that Costa Rica trip, that's the second time, you know, we had to postpone, the families are going to be playing with losing some, some money there. And I think we need to be more on top of making sure that if there is a question of whether it can or can't go, we should know ahead of time. So if we could have a conversation, maybe in the January or February meeting about these trips again?
I think January is very reasonable.
Okay. And my only other thing is that you will be sorely missed, but I wish you all the best of health and happiness in your retirement.
Thank you. Mrs. Reagan?
Okay. Well, why don't I go out of order a little bit here in my notes, seeing that we were talking about the vaccination status as of late in that attestation. Just as a piece of information, for those who wish to avail themselves, there is an optional COVID and flu vaccination clinic that will be occurring again through Air Family Pharmacy at our senior center here in Tuxbury. Just as a reminder to parents, the flyer did go out, and the new pediatric COVID vaccination will be available, the Pfizer booster vaccination, the Moderna booster vaccination, first dose COVID vaccinations, and flu vaccination. Again, this is an optional clinic being offered by Air Family Pharmacy at the senior center this Friday, November 19th. November 1st, we welcomed our new interim principal at the North Street School. Ms. Pernima de Marais brings to us a very strong academic and educational leadership practice to the Tuxbury Public Schools. While she came to us only two and a half weeks ago, it feels like she's been here for months now, as Pernima is out greeting our students, our parents in the morning, in the afternoon, at lunch, at recess. She's been through every classroom in the district and is really making her presence and relationship-building skills available to our teachers. She brings a wealth of experience working in both urban and suburban school districts. Let me just give you a little, a little detail on that. Pernima has 14 years' experience as a high school science teacher and department lead, nine years' experience in high school administrative positions, principal and assistant principal, and most recently, five years of experience in the K through eight grade level as principal and assistant principal. More impressive than her educational experience is the way the references that wrote for her boasted about her passion for teaching and learning, her high expectations for student achievement, and most importantly, her ability to build strong relationships with staff, family, and our students. We hope you join in welcoming Pernima to the district, and she has offered invite if you'd like to come and meet her over at the high, over at the North Street School. We'd be happy to set that up for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Another piece of good news, Tuxbury is the proud recipient again of the Quality Service Learning and Social Emotional Project grant. This comes in two parts, partially during the school year and then again in the summer. So for the 21-22 school year, we will receive $10,000 to integrate quality service learning into the curriculum at the Wynn Middle School during the school day. Additionally, in the 21-22 school year, we will receive $25,000 for, this is what we call our ASOS grant, after-school and out-of-school time, that will currently fund the Heathbrook After-School Penguin Pride Program, the Wynn After-School Academic Support Program, and the Tuxbury Memorial High School After-School Credit Recovery Program. In the summer of '22, we will also receive $45,000 of additional ASOS grant funds to continue with our tuition-free Heathbrook Pride Program, tuition-free Wynn Summer School Program, and tuition-free Credit Recovery Program. So we thank Dr. Bastieri for her continued commitment to these support programs for our schools. This picture is all over the news and all over the internet, and hopefully you've seen it. The new Tuxbury Police Department Comfort Dog has been introduced to the district, and Chief Ryan Columbus put out a press release inviting, and I'm quoting the chief, "This newest member of the Tuxbury Police Department will help serve, protect, and comfort students here in Tuxbury. So I'm very excited to give students in our community opportunity to have a little fun while helping us choose the perfect name for this comfort dog." If folks haven't seen this on the internet, we sent a flyer out, or again, another notice to all families today. Students have through November 30th to help name the dog. We can tell you that the dog will be delivered, be delivered to School Resource Officer Eric Hanley on November 28th, and then they will participate in extensive training through Auntie Dog here in Tuxbury. Very excited to have our comfort dog identified, and pretty soon we'll be hearing the new name. The last time that we met in October, we talked a little bit about the blip in our freshman enrollment, which sometimes we have highs and lows in our enrollment. I did want to bring to your attention, since our SIMs, our Student Information Management System update in October, we've seen some other blips in some of our enrollment, and I wanted to just describe a little bit of that for you. We saw a decrease in our special ed students ages three to five by 14.9%. We saw a decrease in our Title I eligible students by 11.1%. As you know, as we reported earlier in the school year, that contributed to a decrease in our Title I funding. What we did see an increase in, in our student enrollment throughout the district, our first language, not English, our bilingual students are up 22.6%. Our English-language learners recently arriving in the U.S., and that's a little bit of a misnomer the way that's phrased, what we saw was an increase in our kindergarten English learners, so their first time in U.S. schools. It more than doubled. We had 23 students first arriving in U.S. and went up to 58, a 152% increase. And then our English learners, those students needing sheltered English immersion, went up 44%. You'll see in your consent agenda, the hiring of a new ESL teacher. That is in response to the increase in enrollment we saw over the summer and at the start of the school year. This is a one-year-only position. We will reevaluate our need for the support to our students as we get closer to the end of the school year, and this one-year position is grant-funded to respond, as I said, to that increased enrollment. This week is American Education Week. It serves to celebrate public education and to thank and honor the individuals working to ensure that every student receives a quality education. We thank and honor our entire staff and our parents in this collective goal. Our schools and our parents got a little creative this year. We had to, last year, we did not honor and celebrate National Education Week as we typically do, and this year, our schools tried something a little different, as suggested by the American Education Week website. So four elementary schools invited parents and families to record themselves in reading storybooks through both voice recordings and video, and sent them to home room teachers to play through in the classrooms this week. The Ryan School hosted a live stream for parents to view the school, and the Wynn PAC sponsored a teacher appreciation luncheon scheduled for next Tuesday with Wynn's spotlights shared to the parents. The Tuxbury Memorial High School PAC Council sponsor, will sponsor a teacher appreciation dinner scheduled for tomorrow, as that is the parent-teacher conference night. Okay, and then finally, I'd just like to remind all of our parents that Wednesday is an early release day. Next Wednesday, November 24th, is an early release day for both students and staff. Thursday, November 25th, and Friday, November 26th, there is no school for everyone in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. That includes my updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Reagan.
You're welcome.
I'll open it up to my colleagues. We'll start with Mrs. Demos this time.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mrs. Garabedian?
A big thank you to Dr. Bastieri. Thank you.
Nothing yet this time. Thank you.
And I don't have anything as well, Mrs. Reagan. Thank you for that thorough report, as usual. This time, I'd like to turn it over to our business manager, Mr. David Libby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, like to update the committee on a couple of solar projects we're considering in the district in conjunction with the town. We've had a couple of meetings with an energy company called Select Energy, who is vetted through the state and actually won a bid process to be a solar provider to public entities across the state. Brought the town manager in to discuss the projects with him, as he's our, he procures energy for the town, gas and electric. And we're already involved in some solar crediting from projects in the area. I wanted to make sure we weren't going to step on any toes of any existing solar credits that we are receiving as a town. And so the genesis of this was partially, the high school was designed with solar panels in mind from a structural standpoint, as well as raceways from the roof down to the electrical room to provide wiring and ease of access for wiring to convert the building to a solar building. So as we were examining the high school, Select asked us about any other buildings. We looked, we thought about the Ryan because we had just completed a roofing project there. So after you complete a roofing project, it makes sense to, to look at solar there too. So we're working with a contractor, consultants through the state again, called Power Options, to see if the deal makes sense from their perspective. We're actually also working with our roofing contractors, making sure we're not going to void any warranties on our roofs or create any issues for the main purpose of the roof, which is to keep the water out. But just wanted to keep the committee abreast that we're examining this with the town manager. We're pretty, pretty much right at the starting line of this, and we'll keep you updated as, as things move forward.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Any questions?
Not at this time.
Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions, but it sounds great.
Mrs. Demos?
No, not at this time.
David, thank you. My only question is, is it just the schools looking at it? I know it's early on in the process, but are we looking at town buildings too?
Yeah, right now, just the, just the two schools. But municipal buildings are certainly eligible to participate. We just want to make sure we're not, you can, as our consultant told us, you can't over-purchase solar power. So we want to make sure we're not getting into a situation where we're doing that. So we're kind of treading lightly to start and see how that, see how these projects work out for us if we even go down the road with them.
Well, great. I look, I look forward to new updates.
Sure.
It's exciting. Thank you. And that gets us to this evening's consent agenda. I'll open it up to my colleagues. If anyone has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding tonight's consent agenda? See none?
We'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
Second that?
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Tonight's consent agenda is approved as proposed. Moving on to committee reports, we'll start with Mrs. Demos, the elementary school building.
Well, elementary school building is progressing nicely. The school name was the new, the latest thing that we went through. It will be named the Center Elementary School. It was the next step in the process that the state requires so that they can start with signage and, and things on that nature. We will be meeting again right here at Town Hall tomorrow night for our next meeting.
Great. Thank you. And Mr. Parsons, Tuxbury CPAC?
Yes, so I'm, remember, is also CPAC awareness month, and just want to say thank you to the Tuxbury CPAC for the volunteer work they do in connecting families and creating networks of support amongst them. I'd just like to acknowledge their update provided during citizens forum. It is much more thorough and informative than what I would be saying, so I will defer to those comments as my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parsons. And Mrs. Garabedian for the wellness advisory.
So our meeting this month was canceled, but we do have an upcoming meeting. The next one is scheduled for March 23rd, 2022, but I think, from what I understand, we're going to try to get together before that to make up for this meeting.
Great, thank you. And my apologies earlier, I was supposed to make an announcement. Our colleague, Mr. Statman, was traveling, couldn't make it today, so I'm sure he will have an update, the policy subcommittee, at our December 8th meeting. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Parsons for our policy recommended and revisions, the TPS policy, on the second and final reading.
So I'd like to make a motion for the recommendation for revision on JKAA physical restraint policies for a second and final reading.
Okay, the motion. I'll second that. A motion and a second, and I just want to check in with Mr. Malone. We are in fact at the second and final. We need a vote this evening?
We do need a vote.
Okay, great, Mr. Chairman. So we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the policy recommended revisions, the TPS policy, JKAA physical restraints of students. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Parsons. The old business, we're going to move on to professional development and teacher workshop with Mrs. Reagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you, this is informational only, but it showcases our ongoing professional development efforts with our teaching staff at the Tuxbury Public Schools. You will see over 37 planned and implemented sessions on our full-day professional development last November 2nd, or last week, November 2nd. As I said, the district planned and implemented some amazing, high-quality professional development that is differentiated for the varied needs of all of our teachers, and that align to our district goals. In fact, our contracted consultant, Cale Burke, the author of PLC 2.0, he is currently in the district for four full days, Monday through this Thursday, working with our administrative team, as well as all of our PLC facilitators, on that goal of observable impact around fostering that sense of belonging and progress monitoring. As I said, he's here for four full days. He's meeting with each PLC facilitator team at each school and giving them that one-on-one training and support they need to continue with their TIP planners. So you may have seen on the professional development list, TIP planning. That's their Team Impact Plan, and that's what they're generating. How will we know what we're looking for? What will we do? And then what, we want to see that observable impact or reframe our activities. So it's a process, it's a transferable process. I can give you more information as we see the results of Cale's work with our district this week. But the feedback we received today in our district leadership team was that the training and support that these PLC facilitators are getting from him is very, very well-received and really placing them on, on the path to make successful plans for our students.
Great. And would you like to do the MCAS while we're at?
I sure will.
Great, thank you.
So what you have now is hopefully, and I say that, our final personalized Tuxbury Public School MCAS testing schedule, as you know, and I bring this up annually, but for those who haven't heard it, MCAS puts out a very, very, very large window of testing time. We personalize it and really narrow down the days and the exact weeks so that parents, it's a convenience for parents, they can plan, they'll know exactly what grade level is testing and what subject- grade level is testing in what subject area throughout the spring. So we've published this, we've shared it with parents and published it to the website. We don't foresee any changes, but we'll wait and see. We just, you know, have to see how the spring presents itself to us. I would also like to draw any parents' attention, there are some nice sites and websites through DESI to just see, what is it all about? What do the questions look like and feel like? So there's some support here for parents as well with sample MCAS questions.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Start with Mrs. Demos?
Nothing tonight.
Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Mrs. Regan.
You're welcome.
Went on to the business. I see that First Robotics in Disney has made a donation, acceptance of a donation of a vertical drill press from First Robotics to the Tewksbury Memorial High School robotics team. I think that's wonderful. I know there's some information in here. I'm not sure who wants to.
Mr. Libby has some background on that, Mr. Regan.
Great, I can take that. Yeah, so Mr. Scott Morris, who's our robotics coach at the high school, has done it again. He's found a, another funding source for his program. The nature of that activity is one that really requires updated, updated technology and tools all the time. And this First Robotics is the organization that runs that activity. They run the competitions, and they offered this opportunity to reach out for some projects that teams, teams needed. And this was the project that got funded for Tewksbury, a vertical drill press that is handy when they're building their, their robots during the project process. So it's funded through Granger and valued at $666.25, and will be provided for, for the, for the robotics team. So we just wanted to get a formal vote to accept the gift.
Sure. I think it's wonderful. I don't know if anyone has any other comments, Mrs. Demos?
Yeah, so will Mr. Morris be the one that is using this tool, or will there be some sort of, you know, teaching hands-on skills of how to?
I think the, the team gets a hands-on, has a hands-on approach with most of these tools after getting trained with the, by the, by the coaching and the staff at the high school.
But just my first thought was safety.
Yeah.
So just curious to see who it was. But yes, this is very generous. It's great for us, and absolutely, I'm honored to accept this from them.
Great. Mrs. Garabedian?
I have no comments.
Mr. Parsons?
This is, this is great, and I thank you to Mr. Morris for getting this done. I have no questions.
Great.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I'm calling it a donation of the vertical drill press, the First Robotics, to the robotics club.
Great.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the donation of a vertical drill press from First Robotics to the Tewksbury Memorial High School robotics teams. Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you once again to David for the update and to Mr. Morris for going out there and getting some more equipment for the kids in the robotics club. It's wonderful. With that, we're gonna move to school committee matters of interest, and we'll start with Mr. Parsons.
So I had my first meeting with the DEI advisory group. It was the second official meeting they held. Discussion was around the primary goal of developing a better understanding of our town, the people in it, and the experiences they have in it. Future discussion will be around how to do this and what kind of information data should be prioritized during this research phase. That is all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Parsons, and once again, thank you for donating your time to do that important work. Mrs. Garabedian?
I have a few items I'd like to mention. First of all, I'd like to thank the high school for inviting us to their Veterans Day ceremony, like the day before Veterans Day. It was a, it was a really nice ceremony. I think they honored the veterans nicely. There were some students that read, the article was called, "Where Do We Go From Here?" And it was pretty pleasant. The music was great. It was a really nice ceremony. So I'd like to say thank you for inviting the school committee to that, and I appreciate participating in that. I would like to say I'm looking forward to the Ryan School Harvest Festival on Friday, from 5:30 to 7:30. That's for Ryan students and families. Classrooms and students have been decorating scarecrows, so I'm looking forward to attending that event. I also would like to thank my colleagues for having me represent you last week at the MASC and MAS conference, and mentioning, it would be remiss if I didn't mention Pat Muse, who was a former school community member for Tewksbury. She's now sitting on the school committee for Shashin Tech, was honored and received a lifetime member award. So I'd like to say congratulations to Pat Muse. And I look forward to wearing yellow on Friday. So thank you.
And I just want to clarify that it's not MASC, it's MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
MASC and MAS, yes. Thanks, sorry.
It's okay. It's clarifying for the record. Mrs. Demos?
Just for the minutes. Well, everything that I, I had jotted down for my matters of interest has already been shared, so I echo the sentiments of my colleagues up here. I'm excited to see what the students of Tewksbury pick for a name for that, that cute little dog that's coming in. And I look forward to going to see the Harvest Fest, just as I did the Apple Fest on Friday.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And another special congratulations to our female girls' volleyball team. Wonderful run. I got to see them, I think, last week. Boy, they played hot, and I guess they really lost that heartbreaker in, in five, in five sets, but bright future for those girls, and kudos to those student athletes. With that, future school committee dates are December 8th, 2021, and January 12th will actually turn us over into the new year, 2022. The elementary school building is meeting on November 18th. That is tomorrow right here, Mrs. Demos, right?
That's correct.
The CPAC is also having their monthly meeting tomorrow, and their follow-up meeting for December is December 16th. The Wellness Advisory Committee, as Mrs. Garabedian updated, is scheduled for March, but they're trying to get one on the record due to the cancellation. So with that, I'll open it up to my colleagues for any future agenda items. Mr. Parsons?
I have none at this time.
Great. Mrs. Garabedian?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
Just what we had discussed previous to the, the January update for the, the trips.
Great. All right. And I don't have any as well at this time. With that, Mrs. Demos?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:49 PM. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you for attending, and good evening.